This is a call to order for the December 11th, 2023 City Canal Winchester Planning and Zoning Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. White and Thel-- okay, we'll start with Mr. Donahue.
Present.
Ms. Gooden.
Here.
Ms. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Deeds here. Mr. Pauls Grove.
Here.
Right. Motion to excuse Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Wolden Thaler.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pauls Grove.
Yes.
I'll need approval of the November 13th, 2023 minutes, please.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Pauls Grove. Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds.
Yes.
Mr. Pauls Grove.
Yes.
Now it's time for public comment for items that are not on our agenda this evening. So if you're here to talk to us about an item that is not on the agenda, now is the time. Do you, sir, need to speak to something that's not on the agenda?
Is the library on the agenda?
It is on the agenda. All right. If you will be speaking with us tonight, we ask that you stand and take an oath. So if there's any chance you'll talk to us in any capacity tonight, would you please stand and take an oath? Do you swear to be truthful in the testimony you give and tell the truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Moore for the first item on our agenda.
The first item on tonight's agenda, I have kind of grouped here for variance applications, VA 23014, VA 23015, VA 23016, and VA 23017. This group of applications here are variances from Chapter 11, 89.07B, to exceed the maximum permitted size and quantity for window signage at the Canal Winchester Elementary Schools, Middle School, and High School. Up on the screen are kind of aerial photographs of the subject properties. They all vary on different forms of residential zoning classification. The elementary school and the high school is zoned R3 low-density residential, and then the middle school is zoned R1, a limited-density residential zoning district. The request this evening is the variance is the same across all school buildings, so I thought I'd just group this in for time's sake. And if there's any questions to the commission as we move along, please stop me. I've got to help answer. For the Canal Winchester Indian Trail Elementary School building, the local school district did a comprehensive branding package at all the school buildings, but this one's in particular. They put up some banner signs on the light posts around the parking lot, directional signage differentiating which school is which, kind of leading throughout the parking lot, new signage on the wall of the building, as well as doing vinyl graphic decals on the windows and doors. When looking at kind of an aerial for both elementaries here, the yellow flags represent all the light pole banner signs they installed. This marker here at the corner shows the directional signage leading into the facility. The directional signage shows which access drive to hit depending which school you want to go to. And then the vinyl wraps on the windows and doors that they installed on each building that I'll kind of go into here. So Visual A shows Indian Trail and Winchester Trail Elementary. You can see here that on the top left, they did a large CW round decal centered over the doorway. And then the double doors, side lights, and then windows on either side of the doorway have been completely covered by vinyl graphics. When looking at Winchester Trail Elementary, this school building has a round window in this location, so this entire window is covered by the logo. Same scenario here, the double doors, side lights, and windows on either side of the main hallway when you walk into the school building have been wrapped in a vinyl decal. Moving on to the elementary school, similar pattern for this site. All the yellow flags indicate all the banner signs they installed, some vinyl graphics installed on the entrance here, and then wall signage installed at various entry points around the building, including a couple doorways that got covered in vinyl graphics to identify that's an entry into the building as well. So looking at the images here, the main entrance, you could see that, again, the entire entry hallway has been covered in a similar graphic, windows on either side, the double doors. And then this school building has a larger front hallway window that's been wrapped. Looking at one of the side doors here, E, and then the gymnasium entrance, this sign was added to the top, and then each door was wrapped, the glass is wrapped in graphics, D. Moving on to the final location, the high school, again, the yellow pointers are the flags they put on the light poles. They have a new wall sign on this portion of the building facing Washington Street, and then they have vinyl graphics wrapping the main entry here, and then also on the media center, those windows. You can see the entry sign here, a new sign above the door, letter C, and then the graphics that were added to the media center in this location. Staff had asked the schools to apply for the variances from the zoning section. This signage was installed prior to school starting in session. The city has worked with the school district on preparing this variance application, just really an education component on why the variance was needed, you know, why our code prohibits this type of signage for every business in particular, and that, you know, while the school does serve a public function, at the end of the day, it still falls under the same signage regulations as the rest of the city in terms of quantity and location. Just for a brief, you know, reminder for the commission, each building for a commercial business is permitted to have two window signs total that take up no more than 25% of the window. In this case, if there's like a group of windows like this, we've interpreted that to be this is one window, this larger area, not individual panes. So we'll offer some creativity within that section. However, the blanket covering of all three of these exceed the quantity and the percentage requirement. So that's why the request is coming this evening. With the request itself, staff does recognize that this special circumstances and exists for the schools that are applicable to other structures of the same zoning district. It's part of the Canal Winchester Public School System. These facilities interact with the student body and general public on a daily basis. Window signage that's applied to these buildings help guide the public for wayfinding. They're all placed on entry points. They're not just sporadic throughout the building. And then the literal interpretation of the zoning code does not deprive applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. Again, the zoning standards for window signage was created so that commercial entities would not obstruct glass onto the building. Glass is required by our commercial development standards to see inside of the building, so the obstruction of that hand in hand goes against that other requirement for the glass and that granting this variance would permit the local school system to exceed the maximum number and size of window signs that's otherwise restricted. Again, this is, these properties here are part of a community school system rather than a local for-profit or non-for-profit business, so a kind of different animal or code does not specifically call out for special signage regulations. So with that, staff is recommending that the variances VA 23014, VA 23015, VA 23016, and VA 23017 be approved as presented.
Any questions for staff?
Andrew, do you think the signage is primarily for branding, or was it also for security?
During my discussion with the superintendent and then the chief, I guess, I don't know Mike's title, is the grounds manager, the property manager for the school system here. He can clarify what his official title is, but the discussion was, you know, they're trying to keep up with other school districts on branding. This is something that they named off a slew of different schools in the area that have used the same company to create the same kind of graphics package, as well as this example here specifically for the media center. They did a safety study with Madison Township Police Department. Madison Township said the amount of glass in the building could become dangerous if somebody--
Security risk.
Yeah, security risk. So they recommended to basically limit the amount of clear glass facing large open areas. I'm assuming that's the same with, you know, wayfinding points. And then when it comes to some of the other signage they installed, there was concern that once you got onto school grounds, you know, you didn't know where you were going, or it was hard to identify what school property you were on once you were there because the only signage was at the street.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Birch, present. Anything you wish to add, sir? If you could come up to the microphone. Thank you.
No, I don't think there's anything I need to add. Covered it all.
Okay. So we have, one, two, three, we have four variances for this particular tranche. So we'll need to go through the motions on all of them, open the public hearing, close the public hearing. So if I could have a motion for VA 23014 to start. I'm sorry. I'll open it up for public comment.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing, seeing no one coming forth.
Second.
By Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Deeds. Roll call.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pauls Grove.
Yes.
All right. I'll go ahead and motion that we approve variance VA-23-014.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Ms. Gooden. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pauls Grove.
Yes.
Okay, VA 23014 is approved. Now VA 23015, I'll open it up for public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Pauls Grove. Roll call.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pauls Grove.
Yes.
All right. Again, I'll make a motion to approve variance VA-23-015.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Mr. Pauls Grove. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pauls Grove.
Yes.
VA 23015 is approved. VA 23016, I'll now open it up for public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Pauls Grove. Roll call.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pauls Grove.
Yes.
VA 23016 is approved. And now VA 23017, I'll open it up for public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe we've moved, we haven't moved the actual--
I'm sorry.
But I will do so at this time. I will move that we approve VA 23-016.
Thank you. Motion made by Ms. Gooden, second by Mr. Pauls Grove. Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pauls Grove.
Yes.
Now VA 23016 is approved, and we'll move to the last one, which is VA 23017. I'll open it up for public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I vote.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Pauls Grove. Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pauls Grove.
Yes.
Right. Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve VA-23-017.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Ms. Gooden. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pauls Grove.
Yes.
VA 23017 is approved. So I'll turn it over to staff for VA 23019.
The next application, VA 23019, is for 955 West Walnut Street. This is a variance from the same code section, 1189.07B, to exceed the maximum permitted size and quantity for window signage. This subject property is a 3.2-acre piece of property on West Walnut Street for the school's facilities and bus garage. The surrounding properties on West Walnut Street are in the West Walnut Industrial Park. That's zoned limited manufacturing. That can be seen by this big purple swath up on the screen. Just to the south is a trail system for the city of Canal Winchester that follows the Ohio Canal area. Again, the subject property is the Canal Winchester Bus Garage located on West Walnut Street. This facility is a public operation owned and operated by the Canal Winchester Local Schools. The site has been updated with a new freestanding sign along the street, two new wall signs, vinyl graphics on the doors and windows on the north side of the building. The same zoning section here, a window signage is restricted to no more than 25% of the window area, no more than two window signs. When looking at the photograph on the top here, this is the existing signage that was on the building. You can see there's just one wall sign above the kind of center entryway, and then just a location map of the bus garage here on West Walnut Street. When looking at the signage the applicant has added to the building, they've added a second wall sign in this area. The signage that was up here has been lowered to be in between these two windows. The windows and this door have been wrapped in new vinyl, and then this series of windows adjacent to the doorway have all been also wrapped for the branding of the Canal Winchester Local Schools. When reviewing this application, staff found that no special circumstances and conditions existed for the subject property. While this property is owned by the Canal Winchester Local Schools, it's an office side for public school use. It does not welcome the general public, does not have sport games, does not have other types of interaction like the other prior applications do. This property is similar to the surrounding commercial industrial businesses located within that park that are subject to the same zoning standards that this facility should be upheld towards. The literal interpretation of the zoning code would not deprive the applicant of rights enjoyed by other properties. The zoning standards for window signage was created so that commercial entities like what's up on the screen would not obstruct the glass for the building that is otherwise required, that special conditions and circumstances do not result from actions of the applicant. Again, the site is not open to the general public like the institutional uses for the school buildings previously discussed, and that granting of this variance would adversely affect the public health, safety, convenience, comfort, and general welfare by unfairly permitting the property to exceed the signage regulations that other surrounding businesses on the same street would even not be able to have a relief from without the variance request as well. So with that, staff is recommending that VA 23019 be denied as presented.
Questions for staff? So, Mr. Moore, are there any other businesses on this corridor that have a variance for such a, for the signage or advertising?
No, there are no other businesses in that industrial park that have vinyl graphic signage variances, and I'm not even sure if any of them have any signage variances at all.
Has the city done a review on those other businesses similar to the one done by the school? I realize the school submitted an application.
I went through that industrial park prior to this application being filed for another matter, and I don't ever recall seeing any, anything glaring that would have caught my attention that would need relief.
Are we asking them to remove everything?
Our code section permits two window signs on the building that take up no more than 25% of the window. So that would be up for the schools to figure out how to do that. However, based off of the signage applied to the building, this set takes up 100% of the window. I think this graphic is the whole door, so it takes up 100% of the door, and this is 100% of this window casing. So they can have window signage, but just looking at what they have on the building, none of it would comply even if they reduce some of it, just size and scale what's there.
What about the hard signs, the peak and the one that was lowered? Would those be in compliance?
So they're, the schools are permitted to have wall signage. Part of the education component, I talked about the last application, is they did not get a sign permit for anything that they did. So I'm working with their sign company to submit sign permit information after fact to make sure it was installed correctly. That meets the minimum standards for the International Building Code.
Any other questions for staff?
Maybe just quick clarification. When it talks about the sign replaced on the left, that's actually a window, right?
No, there's no window there.
No, no, no. Which was dropped down. You said the second was lowered.
I'm sorry, this right here?
Yes.
I don't believe it's a window. I think it might be this area, but the applicant could clarify. I think it's this area between this window and this window here. That window and that window.
It's not on a window. It's just on the brick.
And again, if we approve this variance, then it sticks with the property--
Correct.
--if the school decides to sell in the future.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other questions for staff? Any, anything you wish to add, Mr. Birch?
No.
Any questions for the applicant? So again, from, for our knowledge, Mr. Moore, essentially, everything in this picture was added as branding or signage versus what was there before.
Correct. Yeah, that's why I provided the before shot here.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. I will now open it up for public comment on this application.
Oh, my turn. Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Pauls Grove. Roll call.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Gooden.
Yes.
Ms. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pauls Grove.
Yes.
Is, so I guess the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I have a hard time just saying remove absolutely everything, going back to zero. So is there something that's kind of a compromise that's been discussed or could be discussed? I understand we want to bring it a lot closer to compliance, but I'm hoping we're not asking him to remove everything and start at zero.
That would be a discussion the commission can have with the applicant if the commission wants to provide some relief, but not the relief that's being requested. But the signage that's on the windows of the building now is not compliant with what our code would permit. So keeping some of it would still be a variance relief of some kind.
And I think I asked this before, but just so I'm clear. The round sign at the top, CW, and the sign that was lowered, those are not affected by the window rules.
Correct.
So they would stay.
Correct.
Just the vinyl.
Just the vinyl.
Okay, that does help. Thank you.
Is that something we wish to speak to the applicant about and make a condition?
And I would, I should say that there are five commissioners here this evening, so a positive vote of four must be obtained for anything to carry. So if we were to vote three to two, you know, the motion would not pass. So, you know, there's certainly an option. We can discuss now with the applicant and move forward. We can table or we can make a vote. I do think personally, there should be some sort of branding, you know, to match what the school district does on their other buildings. You know, the CW at the top and the operations center with the Canal Winchester Local School District, I think that's what that says. On the left, which is on brick, that's compliant, you know, is probably needed from the school district's opinion and standpoint. I don't want to speak for them, but, you know, on the windows, I think there could be discussion around, you know, if it's a definite that they want to keep that for branding purposes, or if they're open to going back and discussing to see if that might be an option to remove to make it fully compliant, and then there wouldn't be a variance needed. Is that correct, Mr. Moore? If what was there now was completely removed, there would be no variance, and I could work with them on putting graphics back that meet our standards. So I'm saying if we left the sign on the left on the brick-- Correct. --and a CW sign at the top, and then staff discussed with the applicant on the window coverage and the banners, then it could be, it could be compliant? Yes. Yeah, they, nothing's prohibiting them from having window signage. Just what they have there now does not meet our code.
Sure. So is that something that the, the school district would be open to discussing with staff if we were to make a condition?
Sure, whatever we can do.
I mean, we certainly want to be good partners and, and understand, you know, the school district's important. I read the letters here of branding and, and making it consistent. But this area is a little bit unique with other businesses in that corridor.
Agree.
You know, we were, it was the branding, definitely a branding project, but it made the bus drivers feel a lot better also about coming to work every day. There were people that would need to know where the bus garage was to maybe pick up something or pick up a child. They didn't, they would drive right past it. They didn't know that was even our facility.
Understood.
So I think a lot of people like this look. Maybe please consider that. But yeah, I mean, if we have to take it down, that's, that's what we'll do.
Okay. So if, thank you. So if we make--
I have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So another option that comes to mind for me, and I don't know if this is allowable, but can we put a condition on there that should the bus station ever move or relocate, that all signage is removed from that building so that whoever comes into that building later can do what they need to do?
So the way, the typical process for the variances is it's for the life of the property because the variance is showing the property cannot be used without the variance relief. So you cannot use the property as efficiently as everybody else in the same zoning district or corridor or industrial park without that relief. That's what criteria is A through G and the criteria for approval are asking, is are those sections being met to provide relief? So it'd be up to the commission to determine what threshold of A through F that needs to be met for a variance to pass. It could be all of them, could be one of them, you know, it's, it's up to the seven board members to determine what that threshold is.
So what you're saying is that we could not enter into a conditional agreement in this variance that says if they were to--
Correct.
--terminate and leave this building, that all signage must be removed?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So if we approve the variance with the condition that initially they must remove or, or work with staff to remain compliant on the window branding and decals, and staff would work directly with the school district to ensure that those met our code?
I don't, I don't think that would even need to be a condition. It'd be if they meet our code, then they can, they can work with staff to meet our code. I don't think it'd be a condition to work with staff to meet code.
So our condition would just be for them to pass, to vote on the variance and then remove the vinyl window cover?
It would be, you would vote to approve the variance as submitted, and if you felt that what was submitted is not appropriate, you'd vote no.
So we can't do a condition? Or we shouldn't do--
If you're doing a condition to comply with code, it's redundant.
So if we, if we deny the variance, then they appeal to--
This is--
--city council?
Or they could remove all the signage and work with staff to make it code compliant.
Okay.
And just so we're clear again, when we talk about, the variance only applies to the vinyl?
Correct. It's only for Chapter 11, 89.07B, to exceed the maximum permitted size and quantity for window signage.
Okay. All right. Does anybody care to make a motion? Okay. All right. Does anybody care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll try. I would like to move that we approve VA-23-019.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Ms. McDonald. Any further discussion? Rule call.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
No.
Ms. McDonald?
No.
Mr. Deeds?
No.
Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
So the variance is denied. VA 23019 did not pass.
Maybe just a question of protocol, but there were several of these, and the school had to pay for each one of these submissions. Is there a way we can give them some relief on submitting somebody very similar variances request? Maybe it's something it'd be nice be nice for staff to consider.
All right, I will turn it over to staff for the next variance application.
The next variance on tonight's agenda is VA 23020. The address is 54 West Waterloo Street. The request this evening is a variance of Chapter 1175.01 subsection G7B to receive relief from the listed permitted materials for building signage. The subject property is zoned Old Town Commercial, consists of 0.09 acres located on the corner of West Waterloo and Elm Street in the Historic District. Properties to the east and south consist of commercial businesses and residential homes intermixed zoned Old Town Commercial and the Historic District. Properties to the west have the same mix of commercial residential properties in the Preservation District. To the north are residential homes zoned Old Town Single Family in the Historic District. Again, this is a 900 square foot single story food and beverage establishment on the corner of West Waterloo and Elm Street. Joe Vino opened up to the public on August 3, 2023. The prior occupant of the building was Rinaldi's Pizza. They closed in September 10 of 2021. The building features two lightbox or cabinet box wall signs, as our code calls it, one on the south wall facing West Waterloo Street, a second on the west wall facing Elm Street. The applicant is requesting relief to keep the two acrylic wall sign panels that were installed on the two lightbox cabinets. The sign panels, again, that were installed do not meet conditions of the sign permit SP 23024. We covered that last month during the appeal by the applicant to note that staff's interpretation of the code for that signed panel was inaccurate, and they should have been permitted to keep it. When looking at the zoning sections for the Old Town Overlay District, subsection B has the variance that's being requested. That sign shall be composed of metal, wood, or wood composite. Again, these two sign panels are an acrylic panel, so it does not meet any of those three requirements. And then kind of digging a little further, the acrylic panel turns this sign into an internally illuminated cabinet, which is prohibited within the district. So if the sign did not have an acrylic panel and it had a opaque panel of some type, then the lightbox type sign would be nonfunctional. So really granting this relief is is almost in essence allowing the internally illuminated cabinet to remain internally illuminated on the building. When looking at our zoning codes for the change in signage, we allow for existing signage to be continued as long as it's not reconstructed, altered, enlarged, extended, or relocated, and can be the same nonconforming sign. However, we also require that any sign that is abandoned for more than 365 days must be turned into a compliant sign when it is no longer abandoned. I say that because the Rinaldi's Pizza sign was abandoned on September 10, 2021. More than 365 days later, Joe Vino received their sign permit on August 4. So this signage type was is noncompliant even if they were to have something be continued. I know last month we looked particularly at the sign being altered by putting in a new panel, but just some additional information for you guys on the timeline between the prior occupant of this building and the current. Again, going over my sign permit application with the property owner here, my condition of approval was that the sign panels be wood or metal to comply with that zoning section. To make it a little more clear to what the applicant was asking for, they could apply a vinyl overlay or decal onto that base material to put it in the cabinet to make it compliant for the zoning section for materials, and then subinvertently the requirement to have it not be internally illuminated. As part of the submittal from the applicant, they did talk about other nonconforming lightbox style signage that does have acrylic panels in the Old Town area. Staff does recognize all of these do exist. They were all existing prior to the sign code prohibiting them outright, and they've all been legal nonconforming where before our code prohibited the acrylic material, these signs existed. And then before our code prohibiting the internally illuminated, these signs were put on buildings or a freestanding sign like the top right photograph. So with that, staff looked at the criteria for approval here. Again, feels that the special circumstances and conditions do not exist that are not applicable to other lands or structures. The signage that was on the building for Rinaldi's Pizza was legal nonconforming with the 2017 Old Town Sign Code that was adopted by city council. When Rinaldi's Pizza vacated the space, the sign became abandoned, and the new occupant is held to the standard of the current sign code that is currently adopted by codified ordinance. Literal interpretation of the zoning code would bring the property into current compliance with zoning regulations for signage in the Old Town area. Literal interpretation of the zoning code would be standard for all properties within the Old Town area, really to reduce and remove a noncompliant signage whenever a change or abandonment would occur. The applicant is requesting relief to have an internally illuminated cabinet that is prohibited under current zoning regulations. Special conditions and circumstances do not exist as they are the new property owner and new business that is located in the space. So the owner of the property has even changed hands within that timeframe from the prior occupant in that building. They were made aware of the current sign regulations when they filed for their sign permit and had done otherwise with the installation, and that granting this variance would adversely affect the public health, prosperity, general welfare through encouraging future development to request relief for unapproved signage materials. Further, the sign type on the building is a lightbox cabinet box sign that's internally illuminated, which is also prohibited in the signage regulations for Old Town. So staff is recommending that VA 23020 be denied as presented. The granting of this variance would authorize this property to keep a nonconforming signage type. This variance would be valid not just for this applicant, but any future property owner or business in this building, and that the applicant has provided examples of similar nonconforming signage types in the Old Town area, and that granting of this variance sets a precedence, further encouraging those nonconforming signage types to remain.
Questions for staff? And Mr. Moore, we talked about this last month in the appeal. This part of Chapter 117501 was adopted in 2019. Is that right?
I double checked. That was 2017.
2017?
2019 was our landscape code update.
Okay.
I flip-flopped the dates on this.
And can you define a little bit more what an abandoned sign is per Chapter 1189.07?
Yes, so I have the code section up on the screen here. An abandoned sign from our definition is any sign that remains after the termination of its associated business or other use. A business or other use shall be considered terminated and have ceased operations for at least 365 consecutive days. Seasonal businesses are exempt from this determination.
And has the city reviewed other businesses in the Old Town District or in the city in general? If there are other businesses that have abandoned signs or window advertising, all those sorts of things?
So our code enforcement process is complaint driven. So no, we have not specifically gone out and addressed every single property to find other noncompliant situations for abandoned signs.
And if you did, would those be grandfathered in legal considered legal noncompliant on a case by case basis?
For a abandoned sign, if it if a business ceases to exist within 365 consecutive days, I do not believe there would be any grandfathering in because you'd have to figure out when that 365 days started, and if it was within a year of the code being adopted, that would start day one of 365, in staff's opinion.
Yeah, we normally do that through the permitting process. So like we did in this case where we noted on there, at the time this permit was submitted, that cabinet box was covered in wood, as you can see in the photos there. And so our our thought was that they've replaced the panels with wood, and that's what that's why the conditions are on there in that way. But typically, we evaluate, you know, all the signage, including abandoned signs, as part of their permit application for a new business going in.
Okay, thank you.
Can we go back to the other examples of the lighted signs for a minute? So the Radiant Living, it's on the on the corner. That's a relatively new business. When did they apply for a sign permit to replace their sign?
They've been there since at least I've been here since 2012, and they've been there in their entire time. Beca Pelles has probably been in there since 2014 or 2015, and Erica Manning Photography has been there prior to 2017.
Okay.
The applicant provided other photographs of other cabinet box style signage. However, with the specifics of this one being an acrylic panel replacement, that's why staff did not share the photograph of Dairy Queen. That's a cabinet box style sign, but it's not kind of the same genre. So didn't feel as as relevant. Same with the Wigwam signage, but that's a 3D embossed panel. Again, different type of signage, you know, than the very specifics of what they're requesting here. So that's why I minimized this slide to what was immediately relevant.
And I wasn't here when Rinaldi's was here, but was that an illuminated sign?
Yes. I don't I can say honestly, I'd never saw it eliminated the entire nine years I've been here. I can't swear that, you know, I've never just been oblivious to it. But I do know when the current occupant, and I had the conversation about the signage, she said they used the acrylic panel because they just upgraded the internals to the cabinet box to get it functional. So I don't know if that means it wasn't prior or, you know, upgrading it in general, but I don't know how Rinaldi's that they illuminate it or not. I do know that it is wired for illumination. This is a conduit cable here.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant present? Anything you wish to add, Mr. Deeds?
Pardon?
Anything you wish to add?
Well, I'd like to add that the signs have been there for over 50 years. I'd like to add that there are vintage historic, just small signs that I think we should keep. Preservation District.
So I have a question. When when you applied for this permit with staff, and pardon my ignorance, but the the black border around the sign was previously wood. Is that mine? Is that what?
No, it's the same.
No, the cabinet that the sign has housed in is metal. That has not been modified.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
The signs have been there since Totem Pole. And I know you don't understand Rinaldi's, but Totem Pole is way before even that. They've been there forever. We didn't erect a sign. I didn't do any I didn't. All I did was take a wood protect. There was a protective that got. And also, the 365 days, we purchased the building in July. It took a year and like 30 days for build out. We did it ourselves. So I am a little bit over the three from us purchasing the building to putting up our signage. We're talking 30-ish days. They're the same signs since Totem Pole. And some of you probably aren't even old enough for Totem Pole, but they've been there forever. And you can even see the way that the electric is hooked up there. It's not anything that they would do today.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, the vine or the yeah, the acrylic panel is the original panel for the panel that was there when you?
Yes, we took off this wooden protective, which, I don't know, they put it up there around about the building, and and we took it off, and that was there. And we're like, yay, let's keep these signs. And then.
So you basically peeled off the old graphic and put on a new graphic?
Thank you. And I would just say that, you know, it's it's the commission's job to to look at these variances and figure out what meets code and what's reasonable. I do respect that, you know, we did adopt additions to Chapter 117501 in 2017. I don't know, Mr. Moore or Mr. Hare, if we have I don't recall hearing any variances of this similar to this in the Old Town District over the last 10 years or so.
No, there's there's been no variances to plan in zoning commission of this this type since I've been here in the last nine years.
We did grant variances for this building when it was the McDormand Museum for the historic Chevrolet signs to be internally illuminated, but those have since been removed.
And I would say, you know, this obviously has come up through the permitting process, you know, that the code was adopted and so forth and so on, which is why we're here talking about a variance.
Yeah.
Open it up. Since this is a variance, I'll open it up for public hearing. Anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this application?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Paulsgrove. Rule call.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
All right. So for this particular one, I feel that it's the the sign is the original sign is the and I understand the the rules and the guidelines. I think if it were a modified sign, I feel that that's that's where I would be more supportive turning it down. But it does look fairly original and anything else that for me personally, that's that's kind of like helping me. But if that's we're looking for a motion, I will move us forward with Mr. Chairman. I'd like to approve variance VA-23-020.
Second. Discussion?
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Ms. Gooden. Any further discussion?
So I think the challenge that I'm having is that when a community adopts a new plan, that anything that's currently a nonconforming and there's an opportunity to make it conforming, it's the that's the time to do it. But I hear what you're saying about this being there for however long. But the rules also say that once it's been vacant for over a year, it's no longer holds its conforming use. And therefore, it doesn't apply. And that's the struggle that I'm having is that it's a gorgeous sign. If it was, I mean, if it was eliminated in the past, I get it, but it doesn't get to carry that nonconforming status. And if the code is to be upheld later on, these signs that we've seen here, if those businesses were ever to change, we would not be able to allow them to continue. Because once you change ownership, you no longer get that conforming use either.
Right.
It only applies to the person that holds that conforming use at the time that the code changed. So for me, I'm struggling with how to do this.
I think if we had if they changed the the color of the panel, if they had changed the materials of the outside, they had to rebuild it. I mean, resized it, any of those items. But it's like, it's almost like it's like a window sticker. You peeled it off, you put a new one on. Is it really a new sign at that point? Or is it just new lettering on a sign?
But I would argue that they've lost that nonconforming use because that building changed ownership. That's that's where I struggle.
And yeah, I think that's where we have.
But I hear what you're saying.
That's where we have to apply our logic, right? Because is a year any more arbitrary than five years?
Right.
Any other discussion on the motion? Rule call.
All right, Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
No.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Paulsgrove?
No.
All right, so the variance is not approved. There needs to be four positive votes to carry.
The next application on tonight's agenda is conditional use twenty-three zero zero six. The location of the subject property is one-two-three Groveport Road. Um, I've highlighted that property in red on the map. The request this evening is a conditional use to permit a public library on the subject property. Uh, this subject property consists of eight point seven-nine acres on the south side of Groveport Road, zoned low-density residential. Uh, properties to the east are the Canal Villas Condominiums, zoned planned residential district. Uh, properties to the south are single-family homes in the Dai Edition, zoned low-density residential. Uh, properties to the east consist of several single-family homes and vacant agricultural land, zoned low-density residential. And property to the north is a public parking lot for the Canal Winchester Swimming Pool. Uh, the request this evening, um, is to approve a conditional use for a new public library to be on the subject property. When looking at our low-density residential zoning district, section eleven fifty-seven point oh-three B permits public uses as a conditional use with some conditions for its location to surrounding residential zoning districts. Uh, but when we're looking at the R-three zoning district as a whole, that is a low-density residential zone district that, if I read off the top line here, is established as a moderate-density detached, single-family residential district and shall be serviced by public water and sanitary sewer systems. The R-three provides for residential character, more dense than the R-one district where economies of scale support additional utilities and infrastructure services. Basically saying that the R-three zoning district, um, will have, uh, utility services. The R-one district doesn't have to, I mean, at the end of the day, but it's a residential zone district. Uh, when we're looking at our conditional uses, um, what a conditional use is, and again, this definition was requested by the chairman, just to help with the conversation this evening, um, is certain uses more intens- intensively affect the surrounding area in which they're located than permitted uses in the same zoning district. And if properly controlled and regulated, these uses can be compatible with the zoning district. To provide this necessary control, such uses shall be designed as conditional uses and allowable upon review and approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, because of the uniqueness and special nature of a conditional use with respect to location, design, size, and method of operation, each such use that comes before the review board shall be considered individually. Uh, this is for new construction and also new ownership where it take place. Uh, so for an example, not for a library specifically, but like a car wash, if it was a mu-mu and it got turned into a turbo wash, different owner, different brand, new conditional use application applies the same as this ground-up construction. Uh, so just kind of keep that, you know, as reference moving forward. Um, again, the applicant is permitting, uh, was requesting approval for a new thirty thousand square foot public library. Uh, the plan notes that this facility, um, let's skip ahead here. The facility, we open seven days a week with varying hours from nine AM to close, uh, no later than eight PM. Uh, the expected number of staff at the facility is between twenty-four and thirty full-time employees. Uh, the plans call for a single-story building to be located along Groveport Road. Um, one-way vehicular access circulating the site is shown around the entire building. When you look at the site plan here, um, a hundred and thirty parking stalls are located to the rear of the building. One-way traffic in on the western side of the site and one-way traffic out on the eastern side of the site. The, there is a pedestrian walkway that's being provided from the sidewalk system on, that they're going to construct along the frontage that will lead to the entry to the rear of the building. And that, uh, when looking at the, um, kind of backing up here, the building design features a modern architectural style that showcases clear glazing, metal architectural panels across the facade. Uh, the applicant notes that the building design prioritizes flexibility and adaptive programming space. Uh, when looking at the criteria for approval for conditional use, uh, sections A through E are different than the variance criteria for approval that we've been discussing this evening. When looking at that criteria up on the screen here, uh, for section A, the proposed use for a public library is a conditional use for a zoning district. However, the development standards for this proposal are not being met. Uh, this building is located less than a hundred and fifty feet from residential zone property. So when looking at their site plan here, uh, the western side of the building is seventy-three point three feet away from this residential property boundary. Uh, the eastern, um, setback here is a hundred and thirty-nine point six feet away. Uh, so with that, the applicant would actually need to request a variance from this section of the code to reduce that a hundred and fifty-foot setback, uh, prior to the conditional use being voted on by the planning zoning commission. Uh, when looking at criteria two, uh, the proposed use for a public library is compatible with adjacent land uses and zoning plans for the area. Uh, this facility is located across street from the public swimming pool, located in walking distance to residential homes and other civic services. Uh, the library is currently renting space at the Canal Winchester Local School District Administrative Office Building. Uh, they're in, uh, looking to expand and open their own dedicated facility that will offer more services to the community. Uh, for the third criteria, the proposed use, uh, will not adversely impact access, traffic flow, and other public facilities and services. Again, the plan calls for one-way access drives at twenty-four feet wide circulating the building, parking to the rear, and these access drives, um, just for reference, are similar in width to Groveport Road. Uh, the proposed use will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of natural scenic historic features and that the proposed use for a public library will enhance the public health, safety, convenience, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare. Um, with the criteria being discussed, again, the, the first one there is that, um, the building that they have shown on the site plan does not meet the hundred and fifty-foot setbacks from the east and western property lines. Um, so staff is recommending that the conditional use be tabled at this time to either the applicant modifies the plans or submits a variance from that conditional use, um, section.
Mr. Moore, has staff been in communication with the applicant on that variance filing?
Yes, um, I talked to the applicant about that. It was one that they, um, had checked that they needed early on and it just kind of got skipped in the last year and a half of design process. Um, so they are going to be filing that, um, hopefully to be heard on the January meeting. Um, they are aware that, uh, the staff recommendation tonight is to table until the January meeting for vote. Um, they do have a presentation tonight they would like to present to the commission. Don't know, Mr. Chair, if you want to hear that presentation prior to any more comments from me or not, but I have it loaded ready for whenever the commission, the applicant's ready.
Okay, uh, any other questions for staff at this point? Okay, uh, is the applicant present? And please, sir, if you could just sign in and introduce yourself and the floor is yours.
Okay, um, uh, thank you to the chair and to the commission members for allowing us to be here today. My name is Patrick Lysinski. I'm the CEO of the Columbus Metropolitan Library. I just want to introduce our team members who are with me because there may be some questions that you asked, I may call upon them. So I have our CFO, Lauren Hagan, and our library consultant that has worked most closely with Lucas and Andrew, Larry Corbus, and our design architect, Rick Ortmeier. And Rick is with Kathy Kelly, who his name is on the, um, uh, application list and the rest of his team that are here. We're pleased, uh, to be here to elaborate on our proposal because I know the proposal has triggered some comments from the community about design. And so I think it's our first opportunity in this table setting to talk about that with you, to hear your questions and also for a chance for us to hear the public comment as well. Columbus Metropolitan Library is a political subdivision celebrating our hundred and fiftieth anniversary. We're governed by a publicly appointed seven-member library board of trustees. Uh, we have been involved in a capital, an extensive capital improvement plan over the last dozen or more years. We've built, remodeled, or expanded fourteen libraries during this time in addition to opening two express libraries, including the one in Canal Winchester. We are excited to bring a new library to your dynamic and growing area. I say area because customers visit our libraries from far and wide. What you're looking at right now is actually a GPS map that we have of the southeast branch, which is the nearest library closest to you. And what you see in the dots are the locations of the homeowners who have visited that library over a six-month period of time. Um, we didn't, I did not include Canal right now because as a, um, express branch, you don't have the same level of activity. But the branch that we're proposing would be fifty percent larger than the southeast branch and we would expect there would be many visitors. Since we have started our capital plan, we have provided a list of design principles for the different architectural firms that we've used. And, uh, when you look at this list, we've really, we, we walk through that with the architects. Our library board of trustees reviews these as the, as time has gone on. And the architects are challenged with interpreting these design principles. Certainly one that I want to point out to you, or two that I would point out to you, I'd start with transparency. You do see quite a bit of glass in our buildings, not just this one, but the others that have been built over the last decade. There's a strategic purpose for that and that is, we've learned over time, not just in the Columbus Library, but in others, that if you don't grow up using libraries, often you think the library is not for you. So the glass is really intended to make, uh, area residents not only see what's inside, to see the books and the technology and the programs that are occurring, but also to see their neighbors. And I'll have it trigger that, well, perhaps if my neighbor's there and I've never used the library, that's a safe place for me. That's worked really well for us in terms of attracting new people, um, to our libraries. Obviously flexibility. On the inside, um, we try to minimize the number of walls because libraries are changing and some that we've built in this last dozen-year period, we are changing the inside of them already. Iconic design, um, certainly has been a hallmark and you'll see that in the twelve library, uh, fourteen libraries that we've designed. We think, um, our project and our program is contributing to the architectural fabric of the entire region. And we're trying to bring iconic design that really inspires the next generation of users as well. Um, we've had passionate community rea- reactions to design for some of our other projects. Those reactions were along a continuum of residents who didn't like the design and those who did like the design. I want to bring up two projects tonight from our recent past as a comparison. And when I do that, I'm not at all suggesting that these libraries are Canal Winchester because each community is unique. But we've learned from our past experience and other projects and I want to share that tonight. So the first map that you see here is for our Parsons Library. And the red outline that you see in pretty much the middle of that map image is actually, uh, German Village. And the location of the library is four blocks to the, let me get my direction right, to the east. In the lower right-hand corner, yeah, here, this is working in the lower right-hand corner of the red box, is actually our Parsons branch. And we certainly had, um, discussions with the community about fitting into the German Village community. And this is the building that is on Parsons that has been very successful. And those design principles were interpreted by Moody Nolan Architects. The second project that I'd like to highlight is for the city of Dublin. And our project is even, is even closer to the historic district of Dublin. And it's turned out to be one of our most successful projects. And during some months, it actually generates more business than the main library downtown. So, let's see if I can get this to work. Well, it doesn't show up on that screen. The, the historic district is the brown area that you see in the middle that, um, uh, is labeled HD, HC, and then the transition historic district is to the north. And we are actually in the transition district, so about a block away from the historic district. And this is, um, the Dublin Library that, um, has been absolutely embraced by the community. Obviously, we want your community to be excited and proud of the new library in Canal Winchester, Canal Winchester, so proud that if visitors come from out of town, you actually take them to see the building. We've held a public design meeting to kick off this project on, on January tenth from five-thirty to seven PM. We publicized the meeting by two service area emails to residents, information on our website, signage in the current branch, flyers in the current branch, word of mouth from the branch manager at various community meetings, and a public press release. We organized a bus tour for the city council, mayor, and development team to see three of our recent buildings, including Gehanna, Whitehall, and Reynoldsburg. Our team has had many meetings with development staff. There's been dialogue and discussion. Some suggestions were accepted, some were not. We also understand that tonight's meeting is another step in that public process. We're not proposing new libraries that fit a traditional mold. Our design principles are aligned with the contemporary buildings we've built and our libraries have plenty of books, but we now have extensive meeting and study room spaces, media production studios, and we're exploring a virtual reality lab for Canal Winchester and some of our other new buildings. The building must sell what's inside in a compelling manner. New Albany has been suggested as a model for Canal Winchester. That building was designed in the last century and the New Albany Library met specific design requirements when the decision was made to locate it where it is. We've been made aware of the community plan that has been approved, but we were not aware of the process and we're not aware of the references made about the new library. It's important to note that the proposed library site is not in the historic district. We understand that we must meet zoning and building code regulations and site plan. And given that there are no specific architectural requirements on our parcel, it's difficult to design to an undefined target. We see mention on, of the library on page one hundred and five of this plan, but we also see this quote on page one hundred and seven. Continue to embrace the creative development proposals that have the potential to become tomorrow's cultural assets. And the referral was made to the BrewDog site with that call out. Columbus Metropolitan Library wants to be tomorrow's cultural asset. I'll close with one more story about our Dublin project, a different community, but one thing is similar. Very passionate people who care about this community and they're excited about and have opinion, opinions about the prospect of a new library. So passionate was Dublin that they started dueling petitions for and against the library design. And as I recall, eight hundred were in favor, five hundred were against. But deciding the design of a library is not accomplished with a public vote. What's important to note is that many views need to be considered. Several months after Dublin opened, I returned to the city council to report to the community on the community's embrace and success of the new library. I could have reported on the book checkouts, computer reservations, or program attendance, but one of the sure signs of success was that the building was overwhelmed on the night of the high school prom, when the kids wanting their pictures taken in and around the library. We hope to make the same impression on the young people in this community who need this library. I ask that the committee consider a wide range of views on this project. Not everyone takes the time to send comments or attend a meeting, but our monitoring of social media suggests that there is just as many supporters as detractors to our early proposal. We hope all viewpoints are considered as you move forward on our project. Thank you for the opportunity and I and our team members are available for questions. Thank you for the opportunity, and I and our team members are available for questions.
Questions for the applicant? Comments from the commission?
Sure, what the heck. Let's start off. Is the, the rendering here relatively accurate as far as colorings? So be more of a taupe-type color with black and...
I think there, is it in the site plan, Andrew, that there's more detail on the materials?
Yeah, the commission skips out their packet to the site and all plans, 11 by 17 sheets. There is a materials call-out on the elevations, some 3D renderings, and I think the very last page is, I was specifically asked by staff to just visually show what that brown material is. It's a wood grain printed sheet of metal. Staff also asked the applicant to bring samples of the materials just for the commission.
So, Rick, could you describe what each of those are?
Yeah, so this is the glazing, consistent with the goal of transparency. I'm personally a evangelist for transparency for all the reasons I've mentioned, which is fairly the needle between being extremely clear, so that you don't get a lot of high reflectivity. If there's a lot of glass, you know, that's darkly tinted, it's theoretically transparent, but then in the right daylight, you can't really see it. So this is type performance, but yet very clear. So this is masonry, which you've seen on some of the other elevations that are submitted, and I think there may be more popular elevations in the whole design description, but for areas that are at the base, which is consistent with a lot of the buildings in Canal Winchester, they're sort of masonry base. In our case, it's above, and in cases of siding, windows above. This is dark brick, but consistent with the request for stone or masonry for materials. This is what you see on the site panels, the sort of angled, large frames that highlight the programmatic areas that are functional inside the building. One frame the entrance, one frame the interior, one quite the... And yes, it's a metal material, but it does and has effectively simulated wood and actually wears better than the natural wood. We did a project in Toledo where we explored wood for a number of months, only to find that the warranty and the projected lifespan of the natural wood was actually much shorter than the half-way materials like this, which the library has used in the locations, provides a great alternative for natural.
I think we have an image in your packet of the Carl Road branch with a different color scheme that uses that product.
And then framing the other materials is this sort of more metallic, which is flashing at the top, and then some frames around some of the materials. So if you can bring these up if that's helpful, otherwise we can...
Does it, does it actually do what I'm seeing from the seat, which is go from brown to gray?
Looks a bit reflective.
It has like a reflective...
Yeah, it's, there's a little, there's a little sort of texture to this.
Okay, so it does kind of...
So as light hits it differently, and at different times of the day, it will be very reflective, and other times it'll be a bit added. The last thing, which you can see here, this is just a dark molyne, a dark colored molyne. And what that actually helps is, it actually helps with transparency of the glass because your eyes, so like, you know, dark shades versus light shades, you can actually see through glass a little easier when the molynes aren't bright.
Can you address, the pictures we're seeing, the top picture is facing Groveport Road, and the bottom picture is facing the parking lot?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. And that, that's consistent with the library's goal to put the library services on display and minimize the kind of visual impact on Groveport Road, the 130 spaces. I will say, it was actually gratifying to work with staff to help them suggest reduce, reducing the total amount of parking, because we had a lot of parking across the street. And I think a collaborative site plan development has been beneficial to this project. There's this nice property to the south of the building, and a pretty good buffer to your neighbors to the south. And actually, reducing the amount of parking helped with our stormwater demand, as well as our sort of overall aesthetic on the residential side of the library.
There's also a question on the joint, and we have a sample where the materials come together and are just...
How, how, I guess adamant or confident, I'm not sure the word I'm looking for here, how, for the coloring of the exterior, you know, how, how much leeway are you guys willing to make in terms of the final site development plan to, you know, after recommendations from us and comments from the public, which we'll hear next, in terms of shading and those sorts of things? And for example, the, the brick color at the bottom, you know, would you be open to a red brick, a darker color, or is it something with branding that you guys are doing at all of your locations? How does that differ from community to community? Or does it differ?
You know, it's, it's, I think it's pretty hard to say what would our shade of color potentially be. Obviously, we want to try to work with you to make this project come to reality, so we want to hear your feedback and the feedback of the public. And that's why we're glad this is a tabled session, to be able to have that conversation. It's just a little bit hard to commit until we really understand.
No, I just wondered if you're willing to, to hear the feedback.
We've got a lot invested in this, in this project, so, and we really want to make it a reality, sure.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you, Joe. That's kind of where I was leaning a little bit, it's like, what's the color scheme? You know, and I, I know there's, this, this is a lot of opinions, and this is, I think it's my great asset to the community, and I actually kind of like some of the, some of the design elements about it. But I think if you were to look at that compared to some of the building stock and the community, you don't see a lot of that taupe-type color. So I think the palette here is more of, like, you know, you brought up BrewDog, right? It's more like grayscale, maroon scale, that white scale. That's probably my, my biggest feedback, that, you know, a color change might actually make a, a significant, at least a significant impact.
Good, thank you.
What other questions?
So I have a, I have a question on the, the site that you've selected. It's a great location. I love that it's across from the pool, and people can go over there in the summer, and it's easy walking, and it's easy to the school. The concern that I have is the actual setbacks from the residential neighborhoods, and I know that's something that we want to, want to have you work with staff on. I'm not seeing that building shrinking a little bit in order to get those setbacks. My question is, were you aware of those setbacks requirements when you, when you selected this site? Or is there an option to secure some additional property to the west or something?
I think there was, that was kind of a late brought to our attention, Rick?
Sir, if you could speak into the mic, thank you. Just so we can get it on the minute.
Rick Ortmeier have signed in.
Thank you.
The setbacks, as, as Mr. Moore pointed out at the, at the outset, I think in some of the early discussions, there, there was a note that if the process requires a conditional use, which I think that there is, there is no actual zoning district in which a library is a, is considered a permitted use. It's just, so, no matter where the library went, it would have to be a conditional use. You know, our read on the code is that 150-foot setback is appropriate to protect the community from uses that may be seen as adverse to the surrounding properties. So I think early conversations suggested that we know that we have to work towards some significant setbacks. If we go 150 feet from both sides, we actually don't really have much of a developable property, certainly not for a building of this scale. I think, as, as Mr. Moore mentioned, that was an early comment, I think even like two years ago now, when the purchase of the property was being considered. I will take credit for my team sort of moving through the process, working through the R3 setbacks, which are fairly minimal, five and 10 feet. And honestly, it was an oversight that, that I think we can rectify without slowing the process down. But, but we do believe a variance is going to be required so that the property can be developed appropriately to meet, maximize the benefit of the library for the community.
So this might be a question for staff, but it's 150 feet on both sides, is that correct? Or is it 150 in total?
Yeah, that's correct. It's 150 from each residential property boundary.
Right.
So what you're seeing here is, you know, Mr. Moore mentioned the setbacks to the building, but you also have setbacks to parking. So in terms of the parking, it's setback 94.5 feet to the west, 54.8 feet to the east, and 316 feet to the south.
Right.
So there are significant setbacks. It can be addressed with landscaping, all those things that they've put in place to help kind of, you know, ease the impacts on adjacent residential properties.
Sure. So, you know, the 136.9 feet setback is, is a little more palatable from, from my perspective, based on the fact that you already have residents that live there, and they're going to be able to understand what's going to be happening. My next question really is, if you're only 73 feet away from the next property next door, you know, does that create any type of impact for that property owner? Should they decide to develop their property?
Yeah, I mean, it's one single-family home that's on that side that would fall within that setback area. You know, this being a public use in a residential district, it's very similar to the applications we talked about earlier with the schools.
Sure.
You know, the schools are public uses, they're in residentially zoned districts, they're adjacent to residential properties, they've coexisted with those residential properties. The same for churches, they fall into the same category.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they're conditional uses, or actually they're permitted uses, as long as they meet certain conditions.
Sure.
In the residential districts.
Yeah.
And the existing library's in a school building and is in closer proximity to residential properties than this is proposed.
Okay. Those were just the things that I saw that I wanted to share with you.
Other questions or comments for the applicant?
Are there any future uses for the, the rear of the property? Is it just going to remain natural, or...
Yeah, I, not at this time. I mean, it, it does offer, we've got a, a similar site in our Whitehall branch where that question comes up, where it could be something that we could let go, and it could be developed. But, you know, early on, we would want to preserve that because we've expanded so many of our libraries over time, and as this community grows, I think for a while, we would just want it to be green space.
What, what's the height of the building? I missed that somewhere.
31.
It's under the, it's under the, it's only retired, 35. But it's as high as we, we try to maximize the presence on Groveport within the limits of its own importance.
Got to cut you off.
Any other questions, comments for the applicant?
I, sorry, sorry, I was a little late on that. I will, I read through all of the social network and, or social media things and all of the comments that were sent directly to us. And I guess I would echo what Rick said, that maybe what you could consider is some reddish brick, which I think would be a lot more palatable to some of our citizens than the dark gray. Otherwise, I love the glass design, and I was on your bus tour.
I know.
And the, the Hannah branch is amazing, the Whitehall branch is amazing, and I'm looking forward to seeing ours.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So we're in the conditional use, so I will now open it up for public comment. So if you come up to speak, please sign in and state your name. You will have four minutes. If you wish to use the full four minutes, I will kindly interrupt you at 3 minutes and 30 seconds. There will also be a timer that's on the screen. We will start the timer once you begin to speak. So please sign in and state your name, and the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Patrick Patterson, and libraries are not what they used to be. People around here have laptops, and they just don't go to the library like they used to. New Albany, people go there because they have stay-at-home moms, and they have nannies. And here, not so much. What he was showing was an area of bad, bad area, it's ghetto. And the people go there, they look at porn, there's violence, they go in there to stay warm. It's like bringing Walmart right here to downtown Canal Winchester. And the size of it, it's huge. And I just think Canal Winchester needs to get their head on straight. These guys here are just trying to make a quick buck. You don't know them from Adam. And they're just trying to make all this money. And it's a bad idea to have this library. And the, the design is absolutely horrible. With old Canal Winchester, you need to do a mix of old and new, if you know anything about design. That's completely modern, and I know several don't like the design. And you got the parking lot, and the parking lot, the lights are going to be right on my kitchen, so there needs to be a buffer zone, there needs to be a huge fence, maybe we'll get some of that border wall. And kids are going to get hit crossing the pool, going to our library. And mark my word, kids going to get hit. It's, it's, Canal's not ready for this. Porn and violence, think of it, porn and violence, that's what's coming. All right, time's up, thank you.
Sir, could you, for the record, could you please just state your address?
200 Woodsview Drive. Yeah, and I'm going to increase my cameras, and, yeah, it's going to be like Fort Knox.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Again, please sign in, state your name, we'll start once you begin to speak.
My name's Roberta Ruthford, and I reside at 190 Woodsview Drive. And my concern, I actually was in favor of the library. But, and I don't know if this was the proper time to bring my concern to, but I was more concerned about the drainage, if when they excavate the land, are they going to raise it? Where, because if they do raise it, like they did the condos on the other side there, we're going to have, all our yards is just going to be a flood. So what kind of drainage, water sewage, was they going to put in there? And just the drainage, or if they was going to have on the very back, I see it's not going to be developed there towards our properties, but are they going to do some kind of landscaping to hide, you know, to just try to make it look more attractive? And that was my main concern. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Pat Lynch, I live at 27 East Columbus Street. I want to say that the library, I think is going to be a wonderful asset for Canal Winchester. I like the overall design, it's a beautifully designed project. I love the use of the space there, I love the landscaping around it, have no problem with the setbacks or the variances that they want to request. I, when I talk to people about Canal Winchester, a lot of people, including yourselves and myself, we live here because we like the look and the feel of Canal Winchester. And that look and that feel comes about with a lot of the building materials that's used within our community. Our historic area, we've got houses with slate roofs, we've got brick siding, wood siding, big porches, we have streetlights that line our streets and add these glass bulbs to them, they go all the way up to Gender Road. That all creates the look and feel. We have our 1199 code that you guys are all very familiar with, more so than most people, that actually dictate that commercial Canal Winchester look, specifically the .03 section of that code. We've had buildings built here, and I'll call them legacy buildings, have been built in areas where the zoning didn't require the 1199 code to be used, but they chose to build these buildings, we'll call them legacy buildings, to reflect that Canal Winchester look. These are some of the schools and churches that have been built. So they followed that look because they wanted to be part of the look and feel of the community. Now, this library is very modern-looking, it's a beautiful design, don't get me wrong. We're very, it's very modern, we're very, what I want to say, traditional in our architecture. I do believe there's a way we can marry the two together to create more of an eclectic design. Maybe, as you said, was just to maybe add brick, more natural brick, to the overall layout of it. Maybe you create gable ends somewhere, I, I don't know, I'm not an architect, but I know it can be done. We can blend this in with the community. Dublin has a lot of contemporary buildings, something like this does work, work very well in Dublin. Parsons Avenue, well, it has Children's Hospital right up the road, so that fits in. it has Children's Hospital right up the road, so that fits in pretty well with that neighborhood. I think we can make something work. I know the library wants to be good stewards of our community. They want to do what's right for us. But this is going to be a legacy building. This building's going to be here for next hundred-plus years. Don't we want something that's going to better fit in with the Canal Winchester look, with the Canal Winchester feel of this community? So that's all I got. I thank you for your time, consideration, and thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Jackie Marion, two sixty-two Woodsview Drive. Hard to follow Pat. His points are very well taken, and I agree with them. And I might mention, by the way, that the people that love the building, I don't see any of them here tonight. I may be wrong, but most of the people here would like to see something modified so that it fits in more with the community. If you go down Groveport Road and you look on the north side, you see a church, a retirement home, all brick. Even the swimming pool has brick on it. And it would be so nice to have this building tie into all of those. It is a gateway to our community. Waterloo and Groveport Road are heavily traveled, and it's a shame it's not in the historic district. But it would be wonderful to have it blend into the community. And it's not to take away from kids being there. I think kids will be there regardless of what the building looks like. But I would like to see some modification so that it's more fitting to our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Please, again, state your name, sign in, your address, and we'll start the timer once you begin to speak, sir.
My name's John Allen. I live at one twenty-nine Groveport Pike, immediately adjacent to the west of the proposed building. I know Pat made mention of the, some of the communications sent out to the region, and I've not been privy to that. The residence itself is in my wife's name. She just passed in November. She had some concerns about the setback specifically. As you can see, the proximity will affect my residence more than anyone. I share the concern with the first speaker about foot traffic across the street, for sure. You know, suggesting that lot that's used for the pool and some other purposes as an extension of use for the library seems a bit irresponsible in terms of the traffic pattern, so that maybe is something should be considered strongly. But as for the setback, you know, something that I would have probably tried to address at an earlier date, had I been kept, you know, more up to speed with this. But again, with my wife's passing and dealing with hospice for some time, I only just found this mail this afternoon, so it came with very little pre-planning to the meeting, but just a chance to be better educated about it, realizing that in fact it was tonight. So I wanted to come get some information, make some points of contact, if nothing else, to have a dialogue, maybe Rick as well, and, you know, perhaps get more material, better educating, you know, like these plans, better understanding of the proposal, even if it is altered, just kind of get up to speed and current with the intent. So I'm here more to be informed than to critique at this point. I'm planning catch-up, and my priorities have been elsewhere, but chief among any concerns that exist right now is the setback immediate to, not just the building, but by all appearances, less than thirty feet probably from that western drive to my residence. So just like to begin a dialogue going forward with the team here. I appreciate that.
Mr. Allen?
There's not room to sign in here more, but maybe I can flip this over.
I will get another paper up there.
Is it okay to ever?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shay. I live at one forty Kramer Street here in Canal Winchester. First off, please, thanks for being here and making our community look better, because it's not an easy job. Library, congratulations, you passed your levy. You're welcome for voting for y'all. We appreciate the great job you do, and we're really excited for you to come to Canal Winchester and be a part of our community. My children and I have gone to the library. My kid's on the blacklist, so she has to use my card because she lost a book. It's a long story. But anyways, I was with y'all when we went on that tour, and I am really excited for you to be here, but I do feel like we've missed some of the design elements and the comments that you're getting here tonight. I think you would really do well to get the buy-in of the community, to get closer to that, more that historical, modern blended feel. Those comments were spot-on. I've received a lot of questions and concerns from constituents here in town that are very concerned about the design appearances, because they feel that it doesn't match it. And it's all along the lines of what you hear tonight. So I would ask you, maybe you go back to the drawing board a little bit, maybe tweak it a little bit, because it's not, I don't think it's what we're looking for in terms of design standards. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shay. Anybody else wish to speak? One more time, last chance. Anybody else care to speak on this application? Time limit's four minutes? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Just a point of clarification, would you like to continue the public hearing to the next meeting?
Yes.
Rather than close the public hearing?
Okay.
There's only one opportunity to have.
Yeah. So, well, there will be a public hearing on the variance request at that meeting, so.
I would recommend if you want to receive input on-
Yeah, we'll continue.
Continue.
To continue, to continue.
So, so they're, so for the public, yeah, and for the public.
Okay.
And so for the public's knowledge, there will be two opportunities to speak at the next meeting, once we hear the final conditional use application and the variance application before the site development plan is discussed. So we will, so do we need a formal vote to keep the public hearing open?
No. You just need a motion to close.
Okay, so we will close the public hearing. That was made by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Paulsgrove.
I'm sorry.
We're withdrawing that.
To continue.
Okay.
We're withdrawing the-
We're withdrawing the motion. I got you.
Leaving it open.
Okay, and so this recommendation and the applicant is okay with tableing this, because there is no path forward without the variance. So I'll need a motion to table conditional use and site development plan. So I'll need conditional use first. Okay, moved by Mr. Paulsgrove, second by Ms. McDonald.
Did, for clarification, Chairman, did you want to just table the conditional use and have staff still run through the site development plan application after? I think you said your motion was to table.
Do we want to hear the site development plan this evening?
I can run through the finer details. I didn't go over them with the conditional use.
Yeah, so let's table, so the motion on the floor is to table conditional use twenty-three zero zero six by Mr. Paulsgrove, second by Ms. McDonald. So let's finish that out. So roll call.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
And so, yes, staff, let's hear the site development plan, SDP twenty-three zero zero nine.
The final application tonight's agenda is for the site development plan for the Columbus Metropolitan Library. Again, they are requesting approval to construct a new thirty thousand square foot public library on the subject eight point seven nine acres. Given the proposed thirty thousand square foot building on the vacant ground, staff had created this overlay here to show you what their site plan looks like in terms of context and scale of kind of a more zoomed-out approach to the community. Excuse me. So you can see here kind of what that rooftop and parking area looks like in kind of relation to other rooftops and parking surrounding the subject property within a two- to three-minute walk, just to give you some correlation here. Again, as we discussed, previous application, this site does have setbacks of thirty feet for the front yard, thirty feet for the rear yard, and with the conditional use request for a public use building, one hundred and fifty feet from the building to the residentially zoned properties to the east and west. With that site plan review, the front yard setback is only shown at twenty-six point seven feet. So the applicant would either need to modify the building to beat the minimum thirty, or request a separate variance relief to have it be closer to thirty to the existing right-of-way. And then again, as discussed, relief for the seventy-three point three feet to the west and one hundred and thirty-six point nine to the east. Again, at this time, the applicant has not filed those variance requests, but they're looking to do so to be on the January agenda. When looking at the site plan as a whole, again, the applicant is showing two oversized one-way access drives at twenty-four feet wide that are on Groveport Road. And this provides vehicular circulation around the building. So again, one way going into the west, one way circulation around this drop-off point at the front of the building, and a one-way circulation out. Along the one-way out, they do have a book drop-off zone that is a kind of pull-off area where you pull off, park. The elevation shows some type of hatch or window in that area where you can drop off a book if you're looking to make a speedy exit out of the property here instead of going inside. The building here does feature, again, the two access drives. The eastern access drive does line up with one of them that feeds into the pool parking lot area. This was intentional. This kind of cross-axis here, whenever staff's working with an applicant on designing access into a facility, we try to have cross-axis as much as possible. That way, if somebody's going from one access drive to the other, they're not trying to weave in and out. In this case, it'd be someone that's leaving the library that's going to the pool. They can pull straight through. With the access drives itself, they are spaced two hundred and thirteen point four feet apart, meaning the minimum hundred and fifty-foot spacing for a twenty-five mile-per-hour roadway. The rear of the building has one hundred and thirty parking stalls. The applicant notes they want to do four future EV parking stalls within this count. On the east side of the building, again, there's the book drop-off area with the pull-off zone as you exit the facility. The parking count is in excess of what our minimums are, which would be sixty for a building of this scale. Looking at the rest of the access to the site, the main and only entry to the building is to the rear. The plans show a sidewalk will be constructed along the frontage of Groveport Road with a pedestrian connection on the eastern side that kind of leads to the entry point to the rear of the building. Staff will be evaluating with a future street program with the city to extend that sidewalk towards either the next intersection at West Street or even further down to Washington Street, but to provide that connectivity on those already developed parcels. The new homes that were constructed along Clinton Street there in the Old Town District, they were required to put sidewalks in, so at least one linkage was just recently constructed, right there across the street from the pool. The only other linkage that's needed is in front of the condominiums to connect to that, and then I believe two homes to Washington Street. So one sidewalk square at a time we're getting there. And then, again, the pedestrian accessway does lead to a zone along the rear of the building that the applicant's plans do show fifteen bike racks on the south side of the building. So they are planning for a lot of bicycle traffic that is leading to the facility. Moving on for utilities, I did put a slide in here that shows this very well, but there is access to water and sewer along Groveport Road. There is a sanitary line that dead-ends right around where this little mark is on the screen here, and they are showing tying into the east side of the building. Water just got installed, a new line on the north side of Groveport Road all the way down to Gender. And then there's storm system. As one of the members of the public commented on, there is an underground storm pipe that kind of crosses the site already that they'll be tying into with underground detention through a bioretention system. I'll show on a future slide. With the proposal here, the applicant is showing the removal of trees on the site to get that building and parking placement. All those red kind of circles and Xs are the trees to be removed. Based off of our zoning code requirements, they are required to replant ninety-one trees or aggregate inches to equal ninety-one trees based off of our minimum tree size. I might kind of go over that in more detail if the commission has any questions on that number. But with the tree removal at ninety-one, they are also required to plant thirty-one trees for the building square footage and additional twenty-two trees for the parking count. So one hundred and forty-four trees are required to be planted on the site. They are showing here that they're planting one hundred and twenty-eight out of that one hundred and forty-four, and that some of the trees are in parking lot islands that meet our standards for a two-for-one deal where the tree counts as two trees if it's a certain size and has a certain cubic inches of soil underneath of it. A lot of math, but they're at a hundred and thirty-six out of one hundred and forty-four they need, and they are evaluating on how to either get the additional trees to make up that count or do the fee in lieu of planting that our code permits. This note down here of one-twenty is incorrect. I've been working with the landscape architect to correct that, but I went through and counted all the trees on the plan here to back-check it with him earlier this week, earlier last week. When looking at some of the stormwater systems, the applicant is showing as part of their green infrastructure that they talked about during their presentation, that they would like to do bioretention throughout the parking lot. For those that are not too familiar, bioretention is just a different way to collect stormwater runoff. They're showing openings in the curbs in the parking lot area that will be graded, so water drains to them. The plant material and the soils will filter the water down before it hits the inlets that will lead to the detention basin. This basin design here is concept and shape, so don't take any of the literal measurements on here, but just to show they're trying to do a dry system that has mobile grasses and plantings throughout the site that ties into the stormwater system. To answer one of the public comments reviewing their grading plan, it looks like they're actually not changing the grading a whole lot from what's there now, and that to hit the outlet for the stormwater, this is the lowest point of the site that will grade to it from the south, and then the north will drain towards the middle where the stormwater outlet is. The lighting plan has been submitted by the applicant, shows a total of, let's skip ahead here, thirteen parking lot, thirteen pole lights on the entry drives at eighteen feet tall, six dual headlights in the rear parking area at twenty-five feet tall, and four pedestrian scale lights at twelve feet tall. All the lights are a modern LED cutoff light fixture. The photometrics plan, it's kind of minimum mini-size here in the corner, basically shows on all property boundaries, there'll be zero light spillover. So with the zero cutoff fixture and no spillover, there should be no additional light on adjacent properties then before the project got started. The scale of the lighting here is color-coded. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. The applicant's provided interior floor plan. They kind of talked about this during their presentation, but again, the floor plan here is designed to be flexible. It's zoned off based on how they want to use the space for, you know, just consideration, the southeast corner here is kind of back-of-house for the library use, and then the rest, you know, more than a three-fourths of the building is front-of-house use where the public interacts. That just kind of gives you an idea for the separation of space. The applicant has provided elevation to the building design. Again, the building is designed with a single entry point to the rear facing the parking lot. There are emergency egress doors around the facade that are required by code. Again, the plans show a book drop-off on the east side of the building with a pull-off zone. The applicant has provided exterior elevations for the building. The design is a modern architectural style that showcases clear glazing, dark gray black brick, and metal panels for the building materials across the facade. One of the metal panels is a light gray tone. You saw a sample of. The other is a printed- You saw a sample of, the other is a printed wood-green pattern. A tiered flat roof, angular wall sections, and projecting metal louvers break up the facade. So anytime you see in the colored renderings here, these kind of dark line types with the shadows, those are kind of louvered panels that project out of the glass. It's kind of hard to see in some of the elevations, so I thought I'd call that out for you. Again, this building design is atypical for the area, but the R3 zoning district does not have a set minimum standard for how a commercial building should be designed. Some of the members of the public mentioned the commercial development standards. Those are not applicable to the R3 zoning district. This would be similar to the Canal Winchester local schools, religious buildings, and other similar places of worship found along Groveport Road, how they are permitted for the zoning district, but the quality of design is set by the commission and the applicants. When looking at the sides and rear elevation here, again, showing just the brick choice here on the lower ends, some of the wood-printed metal panels, the accent gray, fascia pieces, some of the projecting louvered, we'll call them louvered vents that are on the elevations here, and you can see moving across. Staff had asked the applicant, along with bringing the sample, just to show some more information on what that wood-printed metal panel system looked like and what it was, and it was a system that's not used in Canal Winchester. It's not anything staff is familiar with, so we wanted more information on it. So we were aware and figured if we weren't aware of it, it would be helpful for the commission to know as well. So thank you for the applicant for bringing all those samples and stuff. I'm sure if you guys wanted to see any of them in person next month, or, you know, before next month, they'd pass them around for you guys to look at in person. The dumpster enclosure is, a detail was provided. This enclosure for the dumpsters actually, staff's mean, just as modern as the building. It's two-by-fours that are alternated stacked by horizontally and vertically projecting out of the building to create like a board-and-batten type look, I suppose. I had to really zoom in on the detail here, because I've never seen anything like it, but the applicant doesn't have any information on, well, I guess it says it's going to be a cedar natural finish at eight feet tall. The applicant put together some elevations and renderings here. Again, this one's facing, from Groveport Road, facing the front of the building, kind of head-on. This is the Groveport roadside if you're coming into Canal Winchester Old Town area from the west. The rear of the building, if you're kind of looking towards the pool, like through the building towards the pool, this is the entry on the rear, and then just a full view of the rear of the building here if you're within the parking lot area from the library itself. So staff is recommending that the site development plan be tabled at this time. Again, the applicant still needs to apply for variance to reduce the minimum required sideyard setbacks for public use in a R3 zoning district. Additionally, the site plan needs to be modified to provide the 30-foot front yard setback for the building. Questions from the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions for staff?
Why two drives?
Excuse me?
So were the two drives intentional to direct flow? Is it, could you have had one? I'm just asking based on some of the comments and setback conversations.
That would be a question for the applicant on kind of the quantity. We had asked if there could only be one. The concern was if there is one, it would be this drive to the east, and if it's the drive to the east, the comments and concerns staff raised is that it would become two-way traffic.
Right.
And your pull-off for the book drop would have you crossing opposite traffic to hit it, to leave. We had asked if the library could move the book drop to this side of the building to make it one-way, to have it facing the right direction, but that changed the whole interior floor plan, so it was easier to leave it as two one-way access drives. The size of the access drives at 24 feet wide is abnormally large. It's wider than Groveport Road at 23 feet wide. I think the applicant's trying to meet some of the requirements for egress for the fire department. They want 25 feet to have their outriggers out if they are there fighting a fire. I don't know if that's something the fire department is willing to have narrowed up during a tech review process, but that's a question I was going to have for the fire department at that time. Until then, this is what they're, what they've submitted for review.
Any other questions for staff? Anything the applicant wishes to add to this application this evening? Okay. All right, so we need a motion to table.
Right, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table site development plan, SDP-23-009.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Ms. Gooden. Roll call.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pauls Grove?
Yes.
All right, SDP 23009 has been tabled.
In terms of old-new business, City Council just last month reappointed Mr. Pauls Grove, Ms. Gooden, and Mr. Ritchie to serve another four years. I'm on the Plankton zoning commission, so thank you all for wanting to stay and serve more time. And then the community plan was also approved by City Council at their last meeting. It'll go into effect in 30 days from last Monday. So that is something, kind of moving forward, staff will be referencing during appropriate applications in reference to the community plan, if it's, the plans comply or do not with the systems and that. The community plan is something that, you know, we will encourage everybody to reference as much as possible and utilize in the future. A lot of time and effort was put into that, so we hope that Plankton zoning commission takes full advantage of it, and we hope that City Council stays diligent in using that document. We're working on doing a web version of the plan with the consultants now. That should be done sometime, I think in the spring of 2024. It'll be a shorter version of the plan that's a little more palatable, and then we'll have a link to the full PDF document in case anybody wants to reference all the details. Other than that, I don't have anything, unless the commission has any questions for me.
Just a schedule question. I noticed that January 1st is on a Monday, so would City Council move to Tuesday? And are we still on the 8th or whatever that, 7th or whatever the next Monday is?
Yeah, the January meeting will be on the 8th.
Okay, thank you.
I'll send out a calendar tomorrow for the 2024 meeting dates. I just posted on the website and finalized it today, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anything else?
Motion for adjournment?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gooden?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. Mr. Pauls Grove?
Yes.
Timeout, 8:58 PM.